The way he's okay here.
There's another one that we turned on if you want.
I have solid parenting.
My kids were with me, I literally just ate it by myself.
Brittany, the nine oh two, I call it the nine oh two, I don't know what it means either, but.
Easier to read much.
Yeah, once we get all the red and strike through and all that out of there.
Yeah, right in five o'clock, please rise.
Like the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Great, also going to read our mission statement and purpose trips with the communities, the mission of the Delaware Glen Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so they become self-directed, responsible like long life. Roll call, all board members except David Irelandson, he's coming in a couple of minutes late here. Also presently, present, we have superintendent Hunstead, principal Wayne Lepard, Special Education Director, Mary Ann Martin, positive norms, Jason McCoy, welcome, and Burke Belka, our guru. So you're gonna love it when you look back at these recordings someday and like, why did Lindsay call me this week? She knows all.
Yeah.
All right, so do we, uh, no changes the agenda, do we have emotions? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Public comments, rebel recognition.
Well, we have a couple of things. Over here. Um, community ad, rebel recognition from community ad from Tracy, she says, thank you so much to Irene Munder and the transportation services staff and contractors for always getting our students where they need to be. Irene and her staff have accomplished requests from colleagues that requires good thinking and a faster enough. Thank you for all you do for the district staff and our students, you are appreciated. So I don't think that just comes from community ed, I think it comes from all of us. The transportation department, I was sitting with Irene this afternoon when I was over here. She is, I don't know, she just really manages a lot of things and it's, and she does it so well. And so, yeah, so kudos to Irene and her staff. And the contractors, because they've, they've had some interesting times in the last week or two, but they've handled it very well, we much appreciate it. Uh, one other thing, and it's probably something I could just add in my report, but I think we'll just do a rebel recognition, we did. Um, John Jacobson applies for ECF funds, it's the emergency connectivity ones. We just found out, uh, over the weekend, we got twenty one thousand one hundred ninety dollars to use towards our tablet expenses for our K one students, so kudos to John and his work on that. And additional funding to help. So awesome.
Anybody else have anything?
I have a show to Miriam. On Tuesday night, I needed an interpreter. I couldn't get our interpreter system that we're gonna use, it didn't work, and I needed a Spanish speaking interpreter. And Miriam was working and I found her in the hallway and I asked her if she could interpret. And she's like, of course, of course, and she just was willing to step up and helped us out. And if the conference was in fifteen minutes and it was just a fifteen minute conference, but it meant the role to us and she's able to help out a family and the teacher and it was just really nice, so I just wanted to say, I mean, she didn't ask any questions, she, and I'm just like, I'll buy you lunch, and she's like, absolutely not, no, this is fine, it's no big deal, and it's just.
Teacher.
Yeah. It meant a lot to us, um, at the school because we needed someone for that conference and it's really nice to know that you've been, that's the one that they're still willing to help out and be flexible.
Thanks for sharing.
That's awesome.
She is, we're lucky to have her.
And good luck to all our student athletes, they're entering tournament time, so it's gonna be a busy week for kiddos and.
For sure.
Winter activities are upon us, that S word, I don't want to say that word. Got all my birds going south at work, so. All right, so, uh, let's move on to six point one, uh, positive community norms report, Jason. You can just stand at the end over there, sorry, we didn't.
I was curious, okay. I have a fifteen minute presentation and we're gonna make it five, so if you don't have this, this, these two sheets that I wanted to highlight, I can send you the rest of the report of what went on for the year and what's coming. But I promised you I'd come back and tell you about our surveys that we did. And these are the important things, starting from, from page one, ninety one percent of our students, this is the average of middle and high school, don't drink alcohol in a typical month, ninety five percent don't use marijuana in a typical month, and ninety two percent don't vape in a typical month. This is a huge, huge change, if you remember, um, in twenty seventeen, our junior class was vaping at forty three percent. I, in twenty twenty two, our average high school was at vaping at twenty four percent. So if you reverse that to be eight percent average, ten percent, if you want to do apples and apples, ten percent in our high school. That's an amazing change that's happened, so really good things going on with our student body. Um, the work that we're doing is in the gap there because there's a lot of misperception and that's what these next three slides are that I'm gonna run you through. So the first one, if you look at, is the question we asked was how often do you use alcohol? And the way you would read this, and, and I want to show you, because I want you to be able to share this with others, is that ninety eight percent of our, let's just say ninety two point six percent of our students aren't drinking. And yet, so the next line, and yet, only fifty eight percent accurately perceive that norm. Why is that important? Odds ratios show us that when you look at our data, if a student accurately perceives the norm, they are eleven times less likely to drink. Or you could say eleven times more likely to not drink. They are also eleven times more likely to not use marijuana and nine times more likely to not vape. So getting that message out is huge. So if you look at the last three lines, that's our parents, staff, and community adults, so that's probably mostly grandmas and grandpas because those were a phone bank that got called. But sixty six percent of our school staff understood that norm, sixty seven percent of our parents, only twenty seven percent of grandma and grandpa. These make sense because they only hear secondhand stories from their grandkids that I smelled vape in the hallway, or man, I heard that somebody had a party over the weekend, and so they automatically assume everybody's doing it, right? So the next two are really amusing with that in mind, when you look at, um, when it comes to marijuana, like I said, ninety five percent of our students don't, as you can see, it was almost ninety six percent, we actually rounded down. But sixty three percent of our students understood that, better average. If you go to the bottom one, and this is the one where we have the most work to do, ninety three percent of our students aren't vaping, that's amazing, and yet, let's just round it up by point one, forty percent of our students understand the norm. So most of our students still think that the majority of their peers are vaping, so that's a big push this year is to make sure that they understand the actual norms, and then when you look down, the same thing is going on for our staff and our parents as well, very low numbers, so we're getting that communication out, there's gonna be new posters this year, new shirts are gonna be putting out, um, a lot of different things, um, that we're bringing in to bring this number. I'm gonna stop there though and see if you have any questions so that I can stay that five minutes.
This is great, really good to see, great work with, you know, especially like the vaping one, that's huge, so I don't know, have you had a lot of issues in the bathroom this year?
Well, I mean, vaping is still happening, but the percentages are definitely better, I would say, and I don't, you know, Ken or Jill aren't here, they're Katie, but they're definitely, for sure.
Absolutely, and, and we are working to find ways to help because we also recognize that means eight percent of our students are. And for those students that matters, for those parents that matters, and for our admin staff, that means they have to spend time on that, right, so we are definitely trying to find ways to bring in support for those students as well.
I think the other part, Jason, that you brought up, and I like the, the survey because we need to educate our people, also our, our students and our staff about, oh, it's not to the level you think.
Right.
You know, even if the ninety some percent is a little off, it's still much better than thirty nine percent of them, you know what I mean?
Right.
Still think everybody's doing it. Well, not everybody is, and that's.
Yeah, and it's something, it's something to be so proud of, I want our students to know, it was fun, one of the coolest things I heard from a student last year was one of our track team, they were visiting someone else and they had pulled our, the trailer that we had all of our messaging plastered on, and they had students coming from the other teams coming up being like, what, is that real? And they were like, I didn't know what to say, so we're trying to help them, you know, like, this is the good thing, be out there, be proud of the fact, DGF, we have some of the best numbers in the state now, guys. So huge thing for us, we brought up.
Appreciate your time, I see you.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good rest of your evening.
Yeah, thank you. All right, six point two, DGF elementary report. And he had a note sheet for all of you.
Okay, so just to start, uh, and it looks like a lot, I'll, I'll try to cover it quickly, um, and answer questions if you have any, but, so it's a great start to the year we've had so far, um, I will say that from last year at this time to merging two schools, um, and staff, kind of felt like we had to muddle a little bit last year in the first half, maybe two thirds of the year, and then by spring, we kind of had some common visions. And, and now we're in, in that place right now, I'm really going full speed ahead, and I feel really good about where things are at right now. In particular, probably the biggest thing that's on your, is on your later. Skip to that right now is the reading focus, um, letters training, uh, the new curriculum, all of that kind of merged together, merges together, um. One of the comments from T, several teachers has been the curriculum, there's some trainings within that before they present their lessons, and the letters training reinforces all of that for them, so that, that's a really positive thing, I've been in classrooms and Brittany as well, and just watching each grade, and I watched kindergarten today, and it's really, it's just really cool how you can see the scope and sequence, the flow kindergarten through the fourth grade and kindergarten day. There, and it was Allison Stewart's class, but just the reading words, and, and she even commented, commented last year, they had to struggle pulling things together to get that to happen. It's really, it's just really cool to see where they've come so far, so fast, um. Classroom observations, uh, we've been doing, we, all three of us, actually, Mary Ann too, uh, weekly classroom walkthroughs, um, you know, four or five minutes in a room, give them some feedback on, based on their goals or other things that we see. Uh, my formal observations, I've got the first round done so far, um, with uh, non-tenured and then, uh, half, about half of the tenured teachers so far this year. Uh, PBIS, that's another thing that we had to come together with two staffs, so we had the, the Glen Felton Elementary and the Delaware Elementary, they both did PBIS in their own way, and their own way was right, so how do you get them to work it together, and so we've come to fruition with that, it's really in a good place right now. Mentorship program, that's, uh, we kind of filtered it last year at this time, and we, we ran with it again this year, where teachers park with another veteran teacher, um, that are new ones. Um, they have monthly meetings and they have mid-year and end of year surveys to complete. Uh, kind of a big thing right now, uh, I'll just say it's about parking, but I'll just preface it with, it's a one eighty difference than it was a year ago on that south end of the elementary converted now, uh, we have a parking lot on the north side. It's tight in there, um, if you haven't been in there yet, you can see that before and after school, it's especially after school. We've had some conversations with Father Aggie, that, that the church across street, and so kind of a common agreement we've had is that, so there's a struggle at about three o'clock with traffic, and we have people that are staffed out there trying to stop traffic, I don't know if you've seen it. Um, it's, it's awful, that, for about ten, fifteen minutes. I'm surprised people, I'm really surprised people haven't been hit, adults and kids, but they've, we've kind of talked and said, can we have our staff go over to their parking lot because it's jam packed with the public parking over there in their lot. Um, we don't have room in ours because, because of that, so, uh, the agreement is, if we have our staff park over there, other than when they have funerals, which is about eight times a year, they, he told me, we would park elsewhere and have the public park in our lot. Shannon has graciously, graciously offered to have us do snow plowing for them so we can keep it clear, push it off into the grass on the east, and then when the snow is, you know, when the dead of winter, when it's frozen, we'll use that as a lot over there too, in the, in the grass. I don't know, I'm hoping that's gonna help reduce some of that traffic at that end of the daytime, it's aw, it is awful. But will it be the bit, I think it'll be a better scenario, will it be perfect?
The one thing too, Wayne and I talked a lot about this, and, and we walked across the street and talked to Father Aggie and some of his deacons or his trustees, um, I don't know, a month ago or whatever, trying to get something. I'm still, and Wayne and I are still concerned about how to get in and out of our parking lot. So now it'll be more open because we'll have people shifting across the street. The one thing like Wayne said, it's lucky that, you know, we sit and watch it, he just kind of cringed, we have great people out there stopping, running traffic, but since everybody's parking over in the church parking lot, you got all these kids running back and forth, and I know why they're there, so they can get out. And I'm nervous about what our parking lot will be like for these parents to come in. And others, there they are. So I, I don't know, we're gonna have to revisit that potentially, but this is good so we can see, does it work, is it better? Can they get out?
You get no left turn as you're exiting the parking lot is a bonus?
Yes.
Because it curves to the south, but people are trying to turn north. So I think adding that, I mean, that's new as of this year, right?
Yeah.
Cause last spring I was like, whoo, good luck with that.
Yeah.
I mean, I've run a lot of traffic in my time and that is a rough situation.
It's, it's tough, but.
I just, I don't know if it's the best answer, but it's, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be better, but yeah. Wait and see.
Right?
Yeah. Uh, and so that message is gonna go out tomorrow to families and we'll start on Monday to that. Reading, I talked about that, Veterans Day program was very popular last year for the community, uh, that's November tenth. On the floor, we had three hundred chairs. Four hundred for this year. I'm sure we'll need it, it was, every chair was used last year. So that, that's pretty exciting, Cub Scouts are gonna be involved this year as well, looking at W. School of Excellence, uh, I vaguely touched on this, probably, probably about this time last year. Um, so that is a, uh, school improvement process based on six pillars, um. And so we took a, it's based on a survey of six pillars, we did that last, our staff and parents did this last December, I think it was, last fall. We're using that as a baseline, we'll do another survey in January, just to show the growth based on that, and then I did send, I had to send a letter in by the end of this month for a, uh, an intent to apply for, for this, and it's, you said, pretty much what you get is about five schools a year in Minnesota elementary schools that get offered this, and it's, it's a, it's a cool celebration of a elementary school that's showing great promise, great growth. So then the application is in June and then we find out in the fall if we've been accepted or not, if not, then we'll probably redo it over again, you get one or two years to do it. Rebel success starts tomorrow through the end of the year. I do have two edits in here that I didn't notice right away, that's one of them down at the very bottom, should be indented out.
Do we have a lot of kids signed up for rebel success?
Yes, uh.
It was forty eight, like last, we have staff.
Yes. Yeah, it sounds like we did, yeah, yeah. Which is great.
Very much needed.
One thing that Wayne did not, uh, address here is that, and it's kudos to him, if he, we have a Title One application every year. Uh, the wonderful state of Minnesota has changed how you fill it out. And it's a whole new program, and so Wayne's got his TV with the video of how to do it, and then he does a little bit, and then he's got to look, it's just, it's, thank you Wayne for doing this, anyway, and it's Title One, Two, Three, and Four. And you send it and they send it back, and of course they got fourteen people reading it, and then they say this doesn't, so I think we're done, and it's been a process for over a month that Wayne has had to work with the state on this new application. So I just wanna publicly say too, thank you for all that, cause that is not a fun project.
Even Mary Ann got involved.
Yes, yes, I think she came. So I just, uh, that's a pain, and I just really appreciate the time that you've had.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, let's move on to DGF Special Education Report, Mary Ann, and she also got a note, a handout.
Okay, so I think it was David, I can't remember last time, he's so inquisitive and he had really good questions for me, which I couldn't answer because I didn't know, I added some percents in here, so I, I usually say kind of where we're sitting with special education students for DGF. So as of last Wednesday, we were at two ninety. Um, total enrollment at DGF is fifteen sixty three, this was as of last Wednesday as well. Eighteen point fifty five percent of enrolled students are receiving special ed services. Um, and then I did break it down to, to the percent per disability area. So I have speech, and when I say speech, that would be your speech only kids, not the kids that maybe have a different disability area and they also receive speech, our numbers are higher than that for speech. Um, DCD is developmental cognitive delay, PI is physically impaired, deaf hearted hearing, specific learning disability, emotional behavior disorder, other health disability, autism spectrum disorder, developmental delay, that would be our birth to seven years old. Um, and SMI severely multiple impaired, and then currently being tested, out of the two ninety, we have two point seven percent that are being tested, so about eight kids being tested, so, and then I included some data too. Any questions on that? I just have to do this. Well, yeah, it's not to break it down a little bit more, so no.
No, it's nice, this, that's, it's a larger group than I thought, you know, I mean, it's interesting to know, I don't know what those kids are doing.
And we, like I said, we do have a lot more kids receiving speech services, those are just speech only kids, like that's our primary difficulty. Um, monthly special ed meetings, we have bi-monthly DGF Elementary Special Ed Teacher Meetings, one time per month at the high school, middle school, and then one time per month, I have a DGF, um, parent meeting, DGF Elementary meeting at the Delaware site, and then here we have middle school and high school together, and those are the third Tuesday and third Wednesday of the month, and all the principals come to that as well. And when Shannon can make it, Shannon, um, comes as well, and it's nice to have all those different people there because there's so many different questions and sometimes the questions don't even pertain to me, but everyone helps out, so that's nice. Um, staffing, we still have peer professional positions to fill at middle school and high school, and then I forgot, we do have a half a position at the elementary school to fill as well.
So I, I have a question, so, um, with all those open positions, I assume you have several subs coming in?
Well, we have subs that come in and also they're filling in where they need to. Yes, yeah.
Um, so do the, um, part-time or the people who are subbing in, do they get invited to the parent meetings so that they stay?
Yes, 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 even when we, because we've had a long term, because we have one of our parents who is also a licensed teacher, she was doing maternity leave for one of the kindergarten teachers, and her long-term sub, she's been at the parent meeting, so we always invite if we have parent subs, come to the meetings, it just, especially if you're in the building a lot, it helps to know what's going on and they can hear the questions and answers and whatnot, good question. Um, let's see, curriculum and trainings, um, kind of going back to what Wayne said, the elementary special ed teachers and elementary interventionists are using Spire curriculum, I think that's been really beneficial. Uh, we have the monthly online letters training, you know, we had the three days of summer and then we do the monthly, like, right now, there's letters training going on.
You got us out of it.
Did you join at all?
I was there until four thirty.
That's. And so that's been really nice to see and to be able to be a part of that and to see how it's working.
It was nice to see the special ed department go and be a part of it, so they also know what the regular teacher is dealing with. And so it's, it's connected them, it's just so much better instead of, oh, that's special ed, oh, that's regular, no, hey, we're in this together, and now we're supporting each other.
And they're all teaching reading, I mean, it's really important.
It's been nice to hear and see.
And Mrs. Johnson, right now, she's working to get Spire materials ordered through our middle school special ed teachers, so those teachers are currently working on placement testing for their students. And that way we know exactly what materials they need. Community of practice, um, that's through Lake's Country Service Co-op, so it's the different disability areas. And we have teachers that are on at those community of practice groups, and they join, um, they can either go onsite or they can join like through Google meets, and those are really nice for those teachers because sometimes you have those low incident areas and you just learn so much from different people within our region four. So that's, um, I have people going to those as well. Um, and they don't cost anything through Lake's Country Service Co-op, just if they're gonna leave, they might have to get a sub or, um, cancel like a service or whatever, so it kind of depends on the situation. Um, again, like Wayne said, completed first round of for me, formal evaluations for all the non-tenured special ed teachers, and I've completed the special ed teacher eval who are on rotation for this year. Um, we're using the Bullseye platform for evaluations, walkthrough and goal setting. And that has just been really nice, it's helps really consistent. It saves time, helps us to stay organized, um, gain visibility into teachers' goals, they make their goals, and it's all on this platform that we use. Um, deliver personalized, personalized support, and we use the data to drive differentiated professional development, and so it's been really beneficial. You.
And also it's, uh, what's new this year is we can eat, all the admin, we can see each other's, what, what you saw, what she saw on some of the room, or what I see, or what Brittany might see in a room, um. And maybe I didn't, so then I kind of have a different perspective or a wider perspective, I guess, which is kind of nice, in the past, we didn't have that.
And after you get done doing a walkthrough, you can e, email that information out to the teacher, or when we get done doing an eval, after you completed, you automatically can send it in an email, and they can get automatic feedback, and then they can email you back, or whatever, several times to me, it's just, I feel like it's.
It's been good, there's, there's some good dialogue, I mean, some of them are picking up a little slower than others, but there is some good dialogue with some of the, some of the teachers back and forth, uh.
And it's nice to see their goals so that whether you're doing a walkthrough or a formal evaluation and seeing like what's happening in the classroom is actually what their goal is and how it pertains to that, um, some of the special ed teachers have put a goal down that they really want to dig into the Spire curriculum and make sure that they're using that with their students, not just, oh, great, I have this new curriculum and I'm gonna set it aside, we're actually gonna dig in and we're gonna use it, so that's nice to see too.
And the walkthrough thing isn't, it's intended for growth, not catching them, gotcha kind of things, it's, how do, how do we have dialogue and get, help them get better?
I just have my monthly meetings and conference, I continue to do the MPE Special Ed Directors Meeting, that's online, one time per month, and then the Region Four Directors Meeting. It's either virtual or onsite at Lake's Country Service Co-op. This month I actually went onsite, last month I didn't, and then I find myself, I'm trying to multitask a little bit too much, and then so sometimes it's better for me to get out of the building, so I'm actually listening and not trying to do ten things at one time, which we all do too. And then the Maids Conference, the Fall Conference is actually going on today and tomorrow. I decided not to go to the Fall Conference, I'm gonna go to the Spring Conference, it's just, it's hard to get the other building a lot, and there's a lot going on right now, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, or committee reports, uh, personnel, do you just want to give an update, David?
Yeah. So, um, hopeful to just get some progress kind of stalled on a little bit, so.
All right, let's move on to Superintendent Report, six point five.
Yeah, I just knew there were a lot of reports tonight, and we have other meetings coming up after this, so I thought I'd just keep it super simple and, and so the foundation, so John and I have met a few times, um, John Jacobson. And then I was, I reached out to a, a few different communities that have foundations, um, Fergus Falls. Fergus Falls is, uh, a, a place that John and I met with their director of their foundation. They're obviously a little bit bigger school than us, but they are very organized, so, um, visiting with her a lot and just absolutes that you have to have when you start a foundation, and she talked about bylaws and.
absolutes that you have to have when you start a foundation. And she talked about bylaws and, and just everything about it. So she shared some of that. And so I'm putting, this is your book, is just about anything and everything that we probably should have in place before it starts. Uh, we need to meet with our clubs and so Fergus Falls does not have their athletic clubs a part of it. There's a gist for education only. Um, some, most don't. Most keep them separated. Um, they said if you could pull it off, I think it would be great for your community. Yeah, I'm not sure we can either. I wanna visit with the clubs. We wanna make sure that we're supporting each other. Um, and if we don't feel that can happen, then let's start a foundation for education and then we can talk about it down the road potentially. I don't know. These are things to talk about. Uh, but very important with bylaws and membership and requirements, if you're on the Board of Directors and attendance and uh, descriptions of your role and your job, very important, she said, because when you have turnover on a board handling that kind of money, it's vital that they understand their role, they understand how there's the separation and, you know, it's not just for your program that you're a part of. And so they designed the, uh, the bylaws to really protect, um, not only the foundation, but the people that are members. So you don't get yourself in, you don't think about it sometimes, right? And you say yes to stuff that directly affects you or helps you and then it looks wrong. And so it's just very interesting talking to her, uh, over the years of what they've learned. And I, that's the other thing I appreciate is when you talk to somebody that's done it or is doing it, oh, don't do this. Here's a mistake we made. You know, or whatever, or here's something we found out that really worked. That's what's kind of nice to do as we visit with her. So there are a few others that we wanna talk to too and how people donate. One of the biggest things they found as far as establishing and starting their foundation was two things. That's alumni. That's their number one group that gives money. There are corporate sponsors, but it's always alumni that gives the most. And then the staff, they can do an automatic deduct from their chat. And she said it's amazing how many people do that as well. You know, I say it out of mind, you make your donation and you don't think about it. So, um, yeah, so just some little things like that. You probably wouldn't have thought it, or we wouldn't have thought of it until you started visiting with people. So that's what this is. This is just me putting together a bunch of information. There's a lot of work left on it, obviously. And a lot of communication that has to happen with our community and what that might look like. Um, we talked about having a kickoff banquet, inviting some of the bigger players in our community and that, and so they know that this is an invite that we're gonna be asking for a donation. So it's not like we're gonna drop the bomb on there. If you want to attend, they don't have to attend, but invite them to something and with the expectation that we're gonna try to kick off foundation. Our goal is this, and whatever it is, it is, and then go from there. But, uh, which I think can be, it, it's just interesting, um, listening to her in the amount of money they've spent to support their high school programs, middle school programs, elementary programs. It's kind of taken, uh, uh, taken off and it's interesting process how they do it. So there's no, uh, it just, it's an easy way to balance it because of their bylaws. They really follow it. And so it's not like, oh, sixth grade gets it every year. And nobody else gets it, or special ed always gets the money. Nope, it's set up, so it's to protect that a little bit. So it's, yeah. So it's been, it's been fun to go through it and, and learn. Um, and again, there's a lot left to be learned before we kick it off, but just that I'd share an update on that. So if there's, there's a lot of other things going on in our district, obviously, but I just thought tonight with everybody else's report, I'd keep it simple. Anything else for me or questions for me? Okay.
All right, let's move on to seven point one. This is the approval of the October tenth meeting. Do we have a motion? A motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by David. All of you, favorite say aye?
Aye.
Consent agenda, claims and accounts, Laura.
Oh, one million, one hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
All right, also included, um, the consent agenda is our monthly budget report. Um, proving the resignation of Mike Koss, custodian effective October twenty-seventh. Resignation of Heather Engle, food service October twenty-seventh. Prove the donation from Marvin Window in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for D G F Robotics. Prove the donation from Country Financial in the amount of fifteen hundred for updates to the teacher's lounge in the Glenett site. Um, and fundraisers as presented.
There was a few additions there for some sports activities. Holton Palm has got a list on there. Just for some additions that we haven't seen yet. So.
Looks like there's some middle school activities too.
Oh, yeah, for some council.
Yeah.
Yeah. Look, council, uh, turn it on.
Would the, um, craft sale or whatever that, that is, if you wanted to get, um, is that gonna be like considered a fundraiser as well, like the the holiday fair? Vendor fair, vendors, that's disgusting.
I suppose each individual.
I think that's just, yeah.
But there's money being, you have to pay money to come to that as a vendor. So there's gonna be money. So it's gonna
Yeah.
fundraiser for community yet, or we're just getting money in that?
I'm gonna say I'm fun for community, yeah. And I, I don't, I haven't done any of the numbers with Tracy on that, so I can't tell you any more than that right now. Um, do you know what it was? Or let's say you wanted a booth, you know what it was? I'm sure it's kind of off the top of my head, but having the facility. I guess, yeah, I'd have to look. Um, both of the timers are kind of in and out, but it's.
Fundraiser of sorts.
Yeah. Um, good question. I don't know if I'd have to ask.
So and also included on the bottom, um, post prom is not, uh, like an actual school committee anymore. It's all, it's gonna be led by a separate, like, parents of our students, but it's not gonna be run through the school. But they did submit, um, everything that they're gonna be doing on the bottom. Um, they were, they're kind of late to the game and they're, you know, trying to, this is all new and trying to get things going. So I did, uh, talk to Kimberly Savageo, Savageo, and she's been great to work with. And said, you know, we as a board are gonna support you in whatever way you can, cuz we want our students to have a safe environment. So she felt bad. She's a little late to the game. And I said, you know, last year was a learning experience and this is new for you guys. So we will, you know, help support you in any way we can.
Yeah, so look for some of those events, right? So at basketball games, then I do some things.
Yeah.
Just be looking at, it's post prom, I have some additional things that you maybe haven't seen, so.
Um, for the basketball, it says, you know, split the pot and stuff like that. If other teams wanna do that, are we like sharing that or how is that working?
Um, I know that everything was running through Katie and I think split the pot, actually, post prom's got some of those.
I think.
So she's.
I think it's boys basketball. They all get a, so many. Each, Katie has a spreadsheet where she gives each of them an opportunity to do, split the pot so many times a year. And the proceeds benefit that organization or club.
So if multiple ones wanna do it, we just.
Yeah, some, Katie has a list and I can't, and I don't know the numbers either, I guess. It, but it's kind of like the football game last game. It wasn't the football professional club that did it. It was the post prom, so. They, football got three and, yeah, I guess I don't know that Brittany, exactly what the breakdown is, but I know there are others that do it.
Yeah, I was just thinking if someone submitted and just said that and then someone else did.
Yeah, yeah.
We're just sharing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It goes for Katie.
Yep.
Yes, we do. All right, uh, do a motion. So, Nicole, David second. All right, any further discussion or question?
I just wanna say one thing. So the public's listening and Laura read off a big number tonight. And the public's gone, normally it's like three hundred thousand. Um, so the reason it's a little over a million is seven hundred ninety-two thousand went for our summer booking project. So almost eight hundred thousand of the bills tonight went to that. So if anybody's watching going, what are they doing over there spending a million dollars a month or whatever? So that's why, I just wanna make sure we clarify that that meant to this building project that we had extra funds for, for that, everything, so, anyway.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? New and unfinished business, nine point one. Um, this is the first and only reading of the following policy. This is nine oh two, addendum A, use of school facilities. Do we have a motion?
Sold.
Motion by Nicole, second.
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion? I appreciate the time that facilities and, uh, Shannon and Katie Omen and everybody just to clean it and make it a little more simple, you know, more simplified for sure. And I'm sure we'll field questions as a board, as we always will, but, um, the biggest thing is, is trying to make a policy that you can actually read and understand. Always positive.
Right, and like we've talked with Katie and principals and coaches, this is, this is cleaned up. It's easier. It doesn't mean it's perfect. And so if there's other discussions that we hear as a policy committee through this year based on this, we can revisit it, of course, right? And we can change it for next year, but we needed to get something cleaner for now, so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point two, um, this is community educational annual report. I did read through it. Um, can I see, sent the copy if anybody wants to look at it? There's something they have to fill out with the meeting dates, um, and answer a bunch of questions here. Statement of assurance and different things like that and look through and everything looks good to me and.
Yeah, this is more of a numbers, not financial numbers. It's more of participation, yes.
Enrollment numbers, so.
It doesn't have.
Uh, so do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Snow removal, uh, this is a motion to approve all its services as a removal vendor for the Glenett and Dilworth sites. Do we have a motion?
So.
I got Laura and David, anyone with a second?
Yep.
Any questions or discussion for Shannon?
You heard Wayne say about the parking lot across the street at the church. It works really smooth for us to take our parking lot, go straight across. And they're giving us that grassy, you know, huge half of, half of, um, block, I guess. And so that's gonna be beneficial to us too. And if you look at their parking lot, it's just to go straight across. So all it's to do it is gonna be virtually.
It's a good church too.
It'd be great for the church and they've been so accommodating. Yeah, to Wayne's point. It's a disaster at the end of the day and they just let our people just ride them all over their place. So this is an easy trade. I guess I'll say it that way. It's great.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four, non-certified contract for Bryce Young, sodium class two, step three, effective October twenty-fifth. Do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is that to replace Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted, we'll, we'll have a nine point five here, but we have another.
Oh.
So I don't know exactly which one.
Yeah, which one's going in, okay.
Actually, oh, nine point five here. This is a non-certified contract for Brady Gertie's. The sodium class two, step one, effective October fifth. Do we have a motion? I got Micah down there. Amy, you want a second? Any questions or discussion?
So these two positions are actually, these two people are both gonna be over here, cuz we've been super short-staffed here, getting rooms cleaned. So this was, Chase is really happy that he found you.
Awesome, okay, you do. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Non-certified contract for Deborah Marwig, food service class three, step ten, effective November first. Do we have a motion?
No.
I got Laura first and then how about David? Or second, yeah. For a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So does that fill our food service, then, when we speak in the voice?
Well, be patient, nine twenty. Then I can answer that.
All right, so nine point seven here, we have a resolution. This is Form A, granted Minnesota High School League Foundation. Can we get a motion, please? Motion by David, is there a second? Second. Got Micah? Um, floor's all yours, Amy.
Oh, great. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for the Minnesota high school youth to participate in athletic and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of Dilworth, Glen and Felton School recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting and funding extracurricular can-top participation by high school students in athletic and finer programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of Dilworth, Glen and Felton School supports schools' application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for Form A grant to offset student activity fees.
All right, we have a motion by David, a second by Micah. This'll be a roll call vote. Laura? David?
I.
Amy?
I.
Myself, I. Nicole?
I.
Brittany?
I.
Micah?
I.
Great, motion.
Just so you know, last board meeting, you approved Minnesota High School League's Form D. And this is for me. There are two different foundation grant. So I just wanted to make sure you said, well, didn't we do this last one, by last meeting? That was for me, okay.
All right, nine point eight, moving on, uh, to non-certified contract for Jonathan Walder, food service plus one, step one, effective October twenty-fourth. Do we have a motion? By David, is there a second? Again, second by Nicole. Any questions or discussions?
This will, they'll learn.
Shannon, I think we're still down.
Are you sure?
Oh, that's indoors.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next board meeting is Monday, November thirteen, six P M at the D G F Community Room. I don't believe there's any conflicts.
Not yet.
Not yet. It says, not yet. And then policy will be beginning at the conclusion of that board meeting. Um, just gonna plug our district again. If you are looking for a job, if you watch the meeting this long and you're looking for a job, we have, um, a lot of, uh, different job openings that we would be happy to visit with you about, especially paras. Um, so thank you all for their time. It is five forty-five, meeting adjourned.